Call to order the school committee meeting, Saguas School Committee, November 30th, 2023. Stephanie, will you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America. To the people of the United States, one nation under God, in the visual, religious, and cultural.
Here.
The TV in the other room.
Here.
Mr. Church?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, first, we have the reporter that chairman, just want to say about the fall sports. It was an excellent season for fall sports for both men and women's sports. So, really happy about that, really happy that kids are getting involved in that. That's important. I know we went through Thanksgiving. I hope you guys are back, re-energized. Mr. Hashem has a full play for you guys this year. So, anytime you guys time off, take some rest. So, I don't know if anyone else on the board has anything to say.
John doesn't.
It's the seat.
I will echo, I'll echo what you said about the fall sports. And I would say, I've been a big, shall we say, I don't know, I've been happy with the athletic department, let's put it that way. But I always give credit where credit is due, and I see some progress that we've seen over the last few months. So, I will say that I'm pleased with the way that things are coming along over there. So, he says, give credit where credit is due, right, Mr. Hashem?
Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
All right, I got just a few things, a lot of it is procedural. You did have the budget timeline, so that's still standing. I gave that to you the last, the last meeting. I did because we have a presentation today on the school improvement plans. You, as a committee, approved the district improvement plan already on October, I think, 12th. So, what I did want to do is, I just wanted to make a statement as to what the big pieces of that plan were. That way, you kind of know what to listen for tonight. We have three big strategic plan areas that we're tackling this year. One is to support the teachers through professional development, so that they can support the students through implementation of our new programs. Where another one is strengthening the communication and engagement efforts with students, staff, parents, caregivers, the community as a whole. And the last part is to provide the students with a standard-aligned curriculum and have it presented with integrity. So, that's something we're trying to work on, and those are the three, you know, big-ticket items for the district. Naturally, there are many other things that come, you know, together when doing that, but those are the big focus areas from the plan. Some of the other things we've been working on, and this has nothing to do necessarily with the district improvement plans or what the principals are going to talk about tonight. We've been, we had another meeting yesterday with emergency management officials from the town and some of the administrators and our IT department, our building grounds, to make sure that we're on the same page when it comes to emergency management plans. So, we're working on finishing that completely. I just got some edits from the fire department this afternoon. So, we're working on the overall emergency management plan for the district, and then the principals will fine-tune this building-specific aspects for that. And that document should be done, hopefully, pretty soon. And we're just trying to make sure that we're up to date with everything that we're supposed to be doing and all the changes that happen, you know, almost on a daily basis when you're dealing with some of the crisis. We're also working on streamlining student registration. I'm at a point where I'm trying to make sure that, or try to refine our registration process for students, so that every building is doing the same thing. I know that's been a problem in the past, or it's been a concern in the past. I think we are getting the students registered, but we just want to make it easier and make it streamlined for both the families and our own staff, so that everybody knows exactly what to do. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that, you know, rules have changed on the fly at times when you're talking about, you know, students that were, are homeless and some of the rules that were hard and fast now have been lifted. So, there are some, there are some tweaks that we have to do with the registration process, and I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with exactly what the procedure should be, so that everybody's getting exactly what they need and getting the students registered as fast as possible.
On that note, I just want to make sure they're following the policy that we just updated.
Yep, yep, they are, they are following, they are following the policy. I just want, like, everything sort of streamlined, because what happens is that certain things get a little school-specific, and that's okay, but I just want to make sure everybody's doing everything they have to do in this, they're giving the same message. Because right now, until we come up with a central registration, which might be something for the future, you know, parents are registering different kids at different buildings. So, I want the continuity there. So, the other thing that we have, we've, we've done, and I did it the other day, we did walkthroughs and classroom visits in the Belmonte this week. It was, it was nice to get into some of the classrooms. The teachers are doing a real good job with the curriculum that, that we've installed and implemented in the classrooms. It was a really good experience. We went, I know I went in with the principal and my curriculum director, Susan Turbin, went in as well, and we went in and saw some really good things in the classrooms, and we, we did give the teachers the feedback pretty much right away to let them know, you know, that we really appreciate what they're doing in the classrooms at a given time. So, I think that's important as far as the communication and support of the staff. I did have two things to mention. I'll mention them out of what I had in running order on my thing, so just give me one sec. I wanted to mention the National Honor Society induction ceremony is scheduled for Thursday, December 14th at 6:00 PM. You should be getting invitations, but I wanted to put that on your radar. And the other one is the robotics competition that's happening on Saturday, and I don't want to step on the coach's toes. So, Coach, you want to come up here and give a little shout-out and preview of what's happening on Saturday for our students?
Bill Palmorini, Project Lead the Way Robotics Coach, President of the Saguas Educators Association. Again, I'm coming up again to talk to you about the robotics program. We're going to our first competition on Saturday at the Melrose Middle School. We have 16 fifth graders participating. There are two teams, and Ms. Williamson and myself are the coaches for the teams. We will hopefully do well. We're, we were very happy today, was our final practice, and we practiced until almost 5 o'clock, and it was incredible to watch these kids. They are a cohesive team, and it's just incredible to stand there and watch them, because they do, they're doing everything. So, it's, it's exciting. So, we're inviting everyone to come. We want as many people as we can there to cheer them on. It runs from 8:00 in the morning till 3:40 in the afternoon at the Melrose Middle School. So, you're welcome to come. The matches, we don't know the times of our matches until we get there, so I give you times, but I can't. So, they just compete all day long, and they'll give us a list of matches right when we, when we arrive, what time we start. And we compete against a number of communities. I think there are 22 communities we'll be competing against on Saturday. So, hopefully, we'll, we'll show Saguas how great we are. So, we're looking forward to it. We're happy. Thank you.
That's awesome.
And Mr. Chair, I'll just piggyback on that, because I got the chance to see two of my daughters, and I know Mr. Hatch's kids also participated. And it's a lot more intense than I thought it would be, to be perfectly honest with you. You go to a robotics competition, and I really didn't expect the atmosphere. It is kind of an exciting atmosphere to see. The, the kids are very excited, very competitive, they're working real hard. You can see them, you know, problem-solving in real time, because I watched, again, I happen to watch two of my daughters, so I don't know what the other teams were doing, but I can tell you that I watched one of my daughter's teams, like, scrambling in between, what are they, events, is it, yeah, in between events, trying to retool whatever they were doing. And I don't know what they were doing, but I know they were really into it, and you could see them functioning on the fly. And it was just, it was a lot more exciting than I thought it would be, because you think, you know, you're going to be there all day. You know, I'm not saying that you'd have to stay there all day. I did when it was my kids, but it's, it's a lot more interesting and a lot more involved than you, than, it's tough to explain in words. It's really something you got to see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
You know, I, just what Mr. Hashem said, all I can say is, if you have the chance, you have to go experience it. It's, it's an amazing competition, and, and what these, what these youngsters do and go through is just awesome. The atmosphere itself is a cross between the Super Bowl and the WWE match. It's incredible.
That's a pretty good description.
It's incredible.
Sounds like, sounds like Thanksgiving Eve at Kailoong.
Well, I think we're going to have a demonstration here at this room.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we are going to invite, we're going to invite the teams either next week or the week, or the next meeting after that.
June.
Or whenever, 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 we're going to invite them to an upcoming school committee meeting.
When, when we do, let us know.
Absolutely.
I'd like to get some of the, some people to get in here and see it for sure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Charlie wants to bring the photographer.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, we should try to build our own robot and go in and spill his kids. Could you imagine that?
From what I saw, I don't think we'd favor.
That's all.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
So, I'm going to move on to new business, presentation of school improvement plans for 2023, 2024, and the VELC is up first, veterans. Mr. Mondello?
Hello, everyone. For those of you watching, my name is Mike Mondello. I'm the Principal of the Veterans Early Learning Center. First of all, I want to congratulate the committee on your appointment. I appreciate the work you do, and I look forward to working with you guys. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to share a little, a few of the highlights within this VELC school improvement plan. It's still an honor, after 10 years, to come to work every day and support the students of the Saguas community. So, last couple of years, it's been with the foundation and building the foundation, so it's been cool. Anyway, the purpose here is to just share some highlights. As Mr. Hashem said, it's really under three targeted areas, growth, belonging, and learning. As it pertains to growth, when I think about this domain, for me, we really fell into three specific things we're really focusing on at the vets. Obviously, this is about building teacher capacity and supporting their growth and development to create and understand a highly effective learning environment. A big focus of ours is just deepening the work that we started. They really embraced the new curriculum, and I'm really proud of the work they've done. So, year two here is really deepening the understanding, continue to learn and make adjustments to what we've learned, and really applying the learning that they've, they've acquired over that first year of implementation. We've also partnered this year with The Hill, which is, The Hill for Literacy is a Hanson Initiative for Language and Literacy. They're an organization that works in the continental U.S. with schools to just enhance language and literacy. So, that part of the growth and development really supports the, the why behind the work we've been doing, really focused on the science of reading, which I think is important to supporting not only the delivery, but understanding the why. So, we really have a robust PD schedule over the course of the year for the teachers, a coaching cycle that helps us support, you know, the continuous learning that we'll get throughout the PD. In addition to that, another thing that's important of the growth is continuing to grow under the social-emotional umbrella. I think we know that students need to be, feel safe and present to learn, so we've done a lot of work over the last couple of years in creating an understanding of PBIS. So, continuing that work this year, more applying the learning. The first year was really aligning expectations and understanding of what the work was. This year, it's exciting to see that application of learning and really seeing our core values come to life and really embedding students into the work at the school, grade, and class level. So, that's, I'm really excited about our progress under that target area. Under the second target area, belonging, they're all important, but for me, I feel like this is really one of the most important things at the VELC, I think, is the foundation of, well, building the foundation of Saguas, it just being that face of Saguas for, for, for families to come in. We really have the opportunity to set the tone for their educational experience. So, creating a sense of belonging is, is really always a main goal of ours. For me, you know, communication is, is easy to say, but I think what, what it really does for us is it helps to create transparency, which helps me eliminate guesswork, which ultimately leads to trust, which allows us to build opportunities. So, that's continuing to be present in my plan. I think we're also focusing on, within the belonging, just involving students more in the daily operations and spearheading core values and using them to showcase their talents at school meetings. So, getting into classrooms and reading and having them come down and share on the speaker in the morning, Pledge of Allegiance, and talk about a daily core value challenge. So, that's been a nice adjustment this, this year. Lastly, under the, the learning domain, target area, really for me, it's twofold. It's, you know, there's a teaching lane and there's a learning lane. For us, we're continuing to use our teacher time, planning time, meeting time, to focus on, you know, effectively implementing and using our high-quality instructional materials, most importantly, to create a common language, common expectations, common vocabulary, an understanding and assessment. So, the teachers work really hard each day implementing this, so it's nice when they have opportunities to really create that cycle of learning, where they're learning together, they're calibrating together, they're practicing together, and they're reflecting together. And then, in conjunction with that, as always, is that, how do we know students are learning and, and understanding what we're delivering? So, just creating the, and ensuring and creating, you know, a robust assessment platform, so that really understanding where kids are starting, what type of progress are they making, and then really being able to identify areas of focus that help us drive our interventions and just adjust our instructions, so we know students are getting what they need, all students are getting what they need. And that's a really critical component at our, at our level to ensure that, that when students leave the VELC, that they're ready to be successful learners as they transition to the Belmonte. So, that's, that's, any questions?
No, first, I'd like to just thank you for your leadership at the VELC. It's, it's appreciated. You know, we appreciate what you do. It's, you guys, you're a great leader up there, and we appreciate it. I would just ask you guys, and Mr. Hashem, to challenge us this year, if you need something, right? I think that's, that's what we're here for, right? Is for, to help you guys. So, if, you know, if something's out there and it's, it's a thought and it's going to work, bring it to us. We'll, we'll do what we can.
Appreciate your support.
So, does anyone else?
No.
I've got one question for you.
Yeah.
Do you feel like the, the early release days are helping the teachers with their new curriculum and stuff?
Well, I.
I don't want to punch you on the spot, but.
Yeah, you know, I mean, there's always one side of the coin that can be death by a meeting, but when it's focused, and I think what's grounded us is the implementation of the new high-quality instructional materials, so having, teachers having opportunities to use that time in a focused way, that's focused on really, you know, they genuinely care about what, what they're doing and the instruction that they're delivering. So, in my opinion, this year, having that opportunity to have it be a little bit more organic, still focused on teaching, learning, and content, has been really beneficial. So, yeah.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next up is Belmonte.
Oh, I'm sorry, I lost the agenda here.
Next up is the Belmonte.
Belmonte Steam Academy.
I got two gentleman.
Oh, thank you. I must have doodled all of it.
Oh, yeah, there is. The print.
Yeah, I apologize.
That's okay. I'm Dr. Lukey, I'm the interim principal of the Belmonte Steam Academy. Want to thank you for inviting us here tonight, and congratulations to the new members as well. At Belmonte, we are a STEAM academy, and the goals around the mission statement involves really opportunities for success for all kids, in really supporting teachers, supporting the students, and really showing them by our actions on a daily basis, how we go about supporting them and how we're visible and out and around in the classrooms as administrators and, and staff members, to really just kind of reassure staff, help them, you know, support them and feel that they're doing a good job, and validate what they're doing on a regular basis. So, we're really trying to do a lot of that. Those, the main goals of our vision statement involve growing and belonging and learning. And really, with the STEAM academy, I just want to say that the vision of that is, we're committed to developing students for the 21st century and having an innovative learning environment, and that involves helping kids understand how to collaborate, how to have critical thinking skills, and really learning to become lifelong learners in enjoying their educational experiences and keeping it positive, so that they will continue on as they grow and develop through all their stages of education. And STEM education takes that interdisciplinary approach, and as a STEAM school, the focus is hands-on, problem-based learning. STEAM, when we put A in STEM, is, is the arts. And one of the big things that we've done this year is focus on really emphasizing and building up some of our arts programs, music. We also are focusing on general arts. We have chorus. We're hoping to continue to expand with that. And one of the things, when you're talking about STEAM education, it's an equalizer, because you're able, kids are able to use their creative side and begin to, even with some learning challenges or ELL situations, it teaches kids how to learn in different ways and use hands-on education. So, so that's been a big mission and vision this year. And overall, our priorities in growth is working with our coaches, who've done a phenomenal job in helping with our Witten Wisdom program, our Envision Math. They're working with our PD, our professional development. We're, we're working towards SEL and really helping teachers understand about trauma-informed classrooms and understanding how to work with all types of learners and students that are coming from a lot of different kinds of backgrounds. In that sense of belonging that we talk about and just strengthening the communication, working with families as partners. It's a partnership and it's a team approach in helping children be successful. So, really being supportive in that category with monthly newsletters and bringing parents in for different programs. That's one of the things we've been able to do this year for different, we had a poetry program, we've had balloons over Belmonte, we've had all different kinds of things that we're showcasing, what students are doing, and we're welcoming parents in to help and support us, because we're all learning from each other and we're all kind of growing together. Our SEL program also is going on in our wellness. We have that incorporated with Phys Ed and Wellness right now, and that is happening. We have curriculum for that. So, that's another piece that we're using to really continue to grow with that and making use of all different kinds of programs. We've had, our counselors have had parent coffees for parents. We have exhibition night that they're planning for, and we have a, a winter concert that's going to be planned for in January. So, so all those kinds of things and helping that sense of belonging among staff and students. And then, as far as the learning piece, we've, like we said, we've implemented Witten Wisdom this year, it was our second year here, in really just working together and supporting students with the Envision Math. And we also have teachers that participate in a mentoring program. So, any of our new teachers, we've had over, we have 14 new teachers at the Belmonte this year, and so really accessing the mentoring program has helped our teachers grow as well.
Thank you very much, and I'll echo, and I told Mr. Mondello, thank you for your leadership. I know you came in at the, you know, in the summer, so you've done a great job and done a great job with the communication.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Lukey.
Yeah.
You know I'm a big fan of yours, anyway. I'm going to say this, and I got to tell you, I love coming to the Belmonte, just because it's, it's a busy place, but like you said, if you come in here and you get the, the feel of an elementary school, you really do, you know, you get a sense of community when you come in here. The balloons over Belmonte was unbelievable, you know? Every event that you've had so far has been pretty much unbelievable, you know? And everybody's included. I see the teachers always hustling, and if they're not hustling, they get some of the kids that, you know, maybe need to come out of the classroom for a minute, and there's always somebody with them. It's just an amazing, amazing place, and I, I think she's doing a really great job. You and Mr. Pezer and Ms. Toussaint, you know, you guys are doing a really great job, and of course, the staff over there. Oh, I got to give Debbie a big shout-out, Debbie and Shannon, so.
That's right.
I don't want to face them tomorrow, though.
Thank you very much.
But no, honestly, you're doing an incredible job, so I just, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yep, thank you.
So, next up is the Saguas Middle High School, better known as the Complex.
The Complex. MCI, MCI Saguas.
Good evening. I am Brendan Sullivan.
I'm Myra Monto.
We work together, and we run the complex. So, we're presenting one plan for Saguas Middle High School. As you see in the plan, it mirrors and reflects the district improvement plan, and so we have the same three objective areas in growth, belonging, and learning that you see in the district improvement plan, and we talk a little bit more about how it relates to our building. And the final piece, we have a fourth goal, that's an operational goal, that I'll talk about in a moment. So, Mrs. Monto and I will just go back and forth, presenting some of these goals. So, in terms of growth, along with the district, we're really supporting our staff through coaching and professional development to create learning environments needed to effectively support all students. So, some of the major focus areas at the middle high school with that, one is the use of the instructional coaches. We have English and math secondary instructional coaches and an ELL instructional coach of the district. Our instructional coaches are really working directly with those staff to a great extent. Our priority areas are middle school math, particularly sixth and seventh grade, and middle school English, six, seven, and eight. We talked about that in our MCAS presentation. We also have a number of new staff, staff in their first three years of service in English and math, and they're working very, very closely with them in both the middle and high school to make sure they have the skills to teach. We're also doing a lot of professional development and support in the areas of our high-quality instructional materials that we've been bringing in, and Mrs. Monto will talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But we have Witten Wisdom in English in the middle school, we have Carnegie in middle school and high school, we have Open Say Ed right now in the middle school, and we're hopefully gearing up to bring that into the high school next year. So, we're working to try and make sure that fat staff feel supported as they're implementing this. We're also working in our early college program to try and do more curriculum alignment, to try and make sure that what we're doing aligns with what the, at the high school level, aligns with what's expected of students when they get to college. We want to make sure that we're preparing students for what comes next. And in terms of social-emotional learning, we have been working on PBIS the last few years with the rest of the district, so we're staying on that. We've really, over the summer, we met with our leadership team. We're really trying to dig into the nuts and bolts, the practical daily procedures, spending a lot of time this year at the start of the year on cell phones, but really trying to implement these PBIS techniques and really trying to create a very conducive learning environment through that professional development.
Right, and I'm going to piggyback on what he's saying and kind of go out of order of this. The PBIS, we had our dean, Michelle Dwyer, and one of the coaches, Stephanie DiChristoforo, go out today, and they, they will come back and they will bring more PBIS ideas back to us. But what it does is, it, it eliminates any guesswork. Everyone is speaking the same language, that is the goal. Expectations are set of such as, how do you walk in the hallways? You might think that that's, you know, people walk one way or the other, but you're in a middle school or in a high school, and people might not be paying attention to one another. So, PBIS is really important for setting that standard, and it's age-appropriate, grade six, seven, eight, up to the high school. We just changed, changed the wording of it up at the high school. They already know what they're doing at that point. So, to go into the Witten Wisdom and Carnegie Math and to talk about the coaches, I can't stress enough how wonderful they are and what they're doing within the classroom. stress enough how wonderful they are and what they're doing within the classrooms. I walked past an eighth-grade class today, and they pulled me in to show me a Socratic seminar. They were so excited about it. You can feel the energy in the classrooms as you go in. They're doing lesson internalizations in sixth grade for math classes. Open Sayed PD has been a wonderful opportunity for our science department. We do have three new science teachers, and they are receiving what they need at this point. So I'm thrilled with that for the middle school. Sense of belonging. I really appreciated how Mr. Mondello had stated the sense of belonging and how he feels about that, that, you know, it's transparency builds relationships, trust with people. And that's what we're trying to build at the complex. And we've really focused in on the communication piece as far as sending out newsletters to our staff every Monday morning. It goes out, we send out parent emails, whether or not it's joint emails or it's going out to the middle school and the high school separately. And I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that. Yeah, having parent conferences and having parent coffees, we've started that. So the communication is flowing, and yeah, that's one of our major goals.
So the fourth goal that you see in the plan is an operational goal. And this is something that's unique to the high school, excuse me, to the middle high school. And it's to continue to develop, implement, and refine procedures, protocols, and structures for the effective management of Saugus Middle High School complex. Probably the biggest learning curve that I've experienced over the last two and a half years is managing a building of this size with such a wide span of ages, from sixth grade through post-grad. And so a few years ago, we finished the building, we opened the building, but really, I think over the last few years, Mrs. Monto and myself and our team and our staff, we've really been learning and creating the school, like the everyday school culture. And, you know, there's been some missteps at times, but we have really focused in on, you know, taking what worked from the previous two buildings and as we come together and applying it here, and then creating new protocols, new procedures, new traditions that are really going to define Saugus Middle High School complex. So we are really doubling down and focusing in on how do we have smooth daily operations at the complex? I've said it before, I'll say it every time I'm given a microphone, we are blessed to have a wonderful clerical staff who work together and really make things a lot smoother. We're also very blessed to have a leadership team that has defined roles in various grades in parts of the building, but come together, work together, are very willing to cross two different grade levels to help. And we're really trying to document that so that Saugus Middle High School has an organization, a functionality that is defined and isn't dependent on any one person, so that that building is that vibrant learning community where every child, from our 11, 12-year-old sixth graders to our 18-year-old seniors, to our post-grad students, that they feel like that place is home for them, and they feel like they belong there and they have their spot. And for our parents and caregivers, they feel like when they send their kids to school every day, we know what we're doing, and we're taking care of them, and everybody is safe and everyone is learning. So we're really, it's not a flashy goal. It doesn't seem, you know, very, it may not seem like a wow goal, but trying to, still in the process of trying to bring two schools together into one functioning large entity where everyone knows what they're supposed to be doing, that work is still very important to us. And we're very much in the process of making sure we have it all worked out and documented.
I also want to add to that, that one of the things that we're doing is sending out surveys to parents and guardians, to the students and to the staff. And it's, again, building that sense of trust and being open to what they're saying. And I shared some of the results with the parents, what the students had said, and they're looking like they're feeling like they have a sense of belonging there, that they like coming to school. They feel like their teachers really like them. They like one another. So we're building from that baseline and moving it forward.
And once again, thank you, guys. I just have a couple of questions. And my first one is more of a district question, I guess. As far as communication, when I talk to parents, are we, is, like we were talking about registration, having everyone on the same page? What's the best form of communication? Is it Blackboard? Is it emails? What are we doing to? Because sometimes I get parents go like, how come they didn't tell us this? And then I'll talk to you or someone, and they'll say, oh, it was on Blackboard.
Yeah. Well, the way that it typically gets set up, Blackboard is a process of either emails or voice, depending on, or both, combination of both. The phone blast work, and we send them out from time to time if it's an event or something, you know, very specific. I send out, like my community newsletter goes out as an email through Blackboard because that's where we have the information for email accounts for families. So Blackboard and Aspen, our student management system, are integrated within each other. So the email account they have for Aspen, that the parents have for Aspen, is the email account the Blackboard Connect sends out to. IT could better explain it. I'm just, I just know that what I do is I put out a, when I put out my monthly email to the community, and I believe they do as well, they send in what would be considered an email blast, and they use Blackboard as the agent.
Okay, yeah. And it wasn't specifically, it wasn't specifically to one building. It was just that, so.
Yep.
Question?
Yeah. So not to be negative, but some of what I hear from parents is that, why has it taken the middle school and the high school so long to figure this out? You know what I mean? That's what I hear. I see you guys have a plan. I like it, I do. And I, believe me, I see you working every day. I see, you know, trying to make things better. But specifically, is there anything that you can see that is kind of holding us back from getting it together, you know? Like even, I know I talked to you about a little bit, like the library, the kids, we have an unbelievable library in here. So you go to elementary school, you go to the library every single day or a couple days a week, then you hit the middle school, and you don't go to the library at all, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you can't go. And then you go again in high school. So just things like that.
I mean, how frank do you want me to be? I mean, we, two years ago, we lost 19 staff members between parents and teachers. That set us back. I mean, that, we manage every day, and we, you know, we, I think, have been very flexible, and we have worked very hard to try to create great learning opportunities for students with that. But something like that happening does have an impact on schools. So, you know, we are actively working on trying to find ways to create more opportunities. The design of the building, you know, is something that we have, you know, tried to adjust for so that, you know, you can't have middle school students go over to the library unaccompanied because it is on the high school side, and you pass through high school CAF and things. Middle school teachers, we can make arrangements to have them go over there, but it is something we're trying to figure out. You know, I do appreciate everyone's patience as we've been figuring this out. You know, we're also, we came back, we tried to learn how to do school out of COVID. But middle school and high school together, and it's a beautiful complex, and we did the right thing as a community, building that school to give all of our secondary students that opportunity. But there are, you know, age-level differences. And I think one of the things that we have found over the last few years is that Mrs. Monto and I have had lots of discussions about how we can make the middle school environment more, for lack of a better way of saying it, seem more middle school for our middle school students and allow the high school to be high school. And I think we're seeing that result in, you know, the responses of our middle school students. But there are still things that we are working on.
All right. Just to be clear, I'm not saying you guys aren't working hard, I don't want you, but I do want honesty out of you guys, and this is what I like, you know? You're telling me what you think is the issues and, because like you said, parents ask all the time about, you know what I mean? It's, you know, it is what it is, I guess, you know? Was that stuff?
I was one of them.
Oh.
Yeah. I think, I do give you guys credit with staffing and stuff like that. I totally understand that, being a nurse. When I show up to work and they say that there was supposed to be nine people there and there's three, you have to, you got to improvise, you got to do what you have to do. What I found, what I just found the most frustrating was the communication piece. It was just always not hearing. I would have even, I would have even liked hearing from both of you the challenges that were going on. I felt like I never could, it just, the communication piece, when my son was there for sixth, seventh, and eighth was kind of, it was tough. It was tough. I didn't get responses that I needed to get. I didn't, I, I'm a very logical person. I'm reasonable, so I just felt like the parents weren't informed of, even if, even if we were just have a meeting, have a meeting every once, every three months or something, sit the parents down, and I don't want to hear, well, nobody comes. Well, if five people come, those are the five people that care. So that I got, those were the responses that I was getting a little frustrated with. But, I mean.
I mean, we have been very much, we have been more conscious of our messaging this year. One of the things, you know, we use Blackboard Connect. We're communicating with very large groups of people, but also at different grade levels. I know in the high school, the guidance department communicates through grade-level Google classrooms. One of the things we're trying to be very conscious of, I've got four kids of my own, and I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and an elementary schooler. And we're very, also trying to be very conscious of, we know sometimes people don't hear from us because it's messaging overload, you know? I have many unread messages from my children's schools. So one of the things we've been trying to be very thoughtful about this year is having some middle school-only messaging to make sure that, and make it clear it's middle school message, send it to those parents to try and be clear that, because I don't want middle school parents to stop reading our messages because they're like, every time I open it, they're talking about high school, and there's nothing in here relevant to me. So we are trying to be more conscientious with that messaging. Mrs. Monto had a very nice meeting with about 15 or 20 middle school parents in the building yesterday. So we are very much trying to communicate with parents and caregivers much more frequently, but also much more targetedly.
Yeah, and I don't want it to sound like we're picking on you. I mean, it's, it's the whole district, we have the questions on, you know? So, and you guys just have a big building with two different.
In the middle school, high school ages also too, just the age of, I mean, when they're in elementary and stuff, I always felt the communicate, you know, you got your pieces of paper that you put up on the refrigerator, like, you know, they're not, they're not so, to Vinnie's point, I'm not, I'm not.
Mrs. Monto and I, again, we've, we talk every day, and we are very conscious of trying to create a school that, we said, one of our goals, everybody feels welcome. And one of the things that we talked about this year was, the last two years when we did parent open house night, we had kind of carried over from COVID, people came in and just went to their rooms. And we said, there's no reason to do that anymore. So, you know, high school open house night, you know, I met with senior parents first. I, you know, I asked for parents to come into the auditorium just to introduce, because we've also had a lot of role changes and staffing changes in leadership at the building to introduce people. So we are trying to add in more elements like that, just to create that connection. We know that it's a big building. Parents often don't know, who am I supposed to reach out to for what? So on our website, we have a leadership page, and we have everybody's name, their role in the building, for the leadership team, principals, assistant principals, deans, their name, their role in the building, a little bio about them, and their, you know, their contact email to try and help direct people to the person who can, you know, help them with whatever their issue is a little bit quicker.
And to your point on that, Mr. Sullivan, you know, parents have an obligation too. I know no one really wants to come out and say it, but parents should come to these events. If you don't ask them to come every week, you know, it might be once a month or once every two months. I come to the open house for my son, and I'm in a classroom with one other person sometimes, you know? It blows my mind, you know? It's, he had a class with 30, I think there was 30, 30 kids in his class, I think it's his math class. But it was me and one other parent there, you know what I mean? So.
I mean.
But, what I'm saying, people can't complain about communication if they're not going to come in and see what goes on in that school.
I mean, one of the things, and I don't want to keep taking up everyone's time, I know people want to move on, but this is my 23rd, 24th, 23rd year in the district as an educator. And we have wonderful parents, and when we, you know, when they reach out with a concern, they always just want a resolution. We don't have parents waiting in the wings who just want to criticize on everything. So if they reach out with a concern, we do try and be proactive. You know, we do, you know, we are trying to be on our teachers to be more proactive with the, with the parents. I think when you get to secondary, especially high school, parents start to feel like, and it's a, you know, we all experience it, it's a tough balancing act. How much freedom do you give your child to learn how to maneuver in the world, in their world of education, and when do you step in? And teachers are trying to do that balancing act. But we really are trying to be more proactive to reach out to the parents to make sure that they feel like, hey, it's still important for you to be involved at the secondary level.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So moving on to the finance report, year-to-date actual to budget as October 31st, 2023. Thank you, Ms. Andrews, as always.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. So you have in front of you the actual to-budget document as of October 31st, 2023. Saugus Public Schools has expended and encumbered $9,361,136.05. So just a quick little refresher on what this document represents. As you see, it goes back to FY '22, so it gives you three years of data to compare against. On the far left hand, you see the cost centers. Okay, so those are the school buildings, the administration cost center, buildings and ground, non-instructional, district-wide, and special education. So what that represents is this document ties into the state reporting in the end-of-year report, and it's set up so that the information flows correctly into that document in the manner in which it is required. As you go through the document, you will see that there's an FY '24 original budget and an FY '24 revised budget. The original budget was passed last February. So much happened since then that the budget needs to be revised. This budget is a living document, and it represents the needs of the district at any given time, which is why you will see a budget amendment this evening. So as the needs change, we get together, the administrators, we discuss them, and we try to make shifts in the budget to support those needs. Another interesting note here is if you look on page two, you will see the prior year carry forwards. Those are any expenses that were carried forward from FY '23 to FY '24. Now, they are not part of the FY '24 budget. Those are funds that were encumbered last year that were not paid by June 30th. And as you can see, there's a very little balance left because they usually get paid in the beginning of July. We have a couple of bills outstanding. I do have some news to share with you. I gave you an update on the student activities vehicle line. Okay, that was the purchase order that we put together during the pandemic when we had. had some extra funds. That van should be here in a couple of weeks. I was notified today that all that remains is for the Saugus Public School signs to be put on it. So you will see that $73,358 reduced because we will be paying for that van. So that's some exciting news. So as you can see, it's always in motion, and it reflects the needs of the district. You also have in front of you the grant balances as of November 28, 2023. So the budget document is a month behind, okay? Because obviously, November now, can't give you the expenses until the month close, and then I take a little time, and I actually do reconcile every month. I kind of go through and make sure everything's on track. The grant balances will always be more current because they're a snapshot of when I draw down the grants. So this month, it was November 28, and this is a little bit of a snapshot. And as you can see, the FY '23 grants, we're chipping away at those. Again, as I mentioned before, that's because during the pandemic, we were legally allowed to keep carrying money over because we couldn't spend it. So we had to chip away at the FY '20 grants, the '21 grants, the '22 grants, and '23. So as you can see, pretty soon, we'll be all caught up with that. And this month, you'll notice that there's no revolving account balances, and I believe we came to an agreement in the past that those would be given to you quarterly, okay? Because really, your oversight of that is just to ensure that the balances are positive because if it ever goes negative, then we have to cover it at June 30 from operating budget funds. We haven't had to do that ever since the days of the food service account. So we're in good shape with those accounts as well. I do review them constantly. So the last document you have is budget amendment number three, okay? We have a line item budget, and from time to time, we have to kind of reallocate the budget. So this is a budget amendment. It is not a budget transfer because we don't have funds the way the town does. You know, we don't go from one fund to another fund. We stay within our budget. So this budget always comes down to zero. It has to, okay? You take from one line, you put in another line, it has to come down to zero. So that's what this budget amendment is. And really, what it's doing here is reallocating salary lines. You know, we have turnover. Even at this point, we're still hiring, though people may leave. And we also needed to support some other line deficiencies, okay? Because at this point, I can't wait to carry that until after budget because we need the funding now. But as you can see, we kept, we stayed within our budget, and it comes down to zero. Anyone have any questions I can answer? And I'm happy to answer questions at any time.
I just, I have one quick question. ESAT III, the ESAT III grant, when is that, when do we need to expend that by? Is that 202...
September of 2024.
Okay. Thank you.
That was my question, too.
Is that the kind of money? The ESAT III?
No.
We were using, no, we were drawing from the...
Okay. Okay. If you would take a vote on that budget amendment.
So we have a budget amendment three to reallocate funding to support turnover, increase salary, and legal expense. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Chair seconds. Take a roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Bola?
Yes.
Winchard?
Yes.
Yes. Second, we just need to go back and vote on the improvement plans. I apologize, I thought, because we voted on the district.
Yep, no, you did.
So we have the Felk School Improvement Plan. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. Do a roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
The head?
Yes.
Bola? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the Belmont DSTEM School Improvement Plan. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. Roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Head? Yes.
Bola? Yes.
Winchard? Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the Saugus Middle High School Complex Improvement Plan.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. Roll.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
The head?
Yes.
Bola? Yes.
Winchard?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, we, before we move on, thank you again, Ms. Andrews. I know what you put into this. It's not something that you do before nine o'clock, so. We have approval of bills. The approval of bills dated December 7th, 2023, December 7th? Is that right? December 7th? No.
It should be November 7?
Or November 27.
November 27. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, November 27th.
Yeah. So we have approval of bills dated November 27th, 2023, in the amount of $595,616.53.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the approval of school committee meeting. School committee meeting minutes for open session, November 16th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a calendar discussion. We had a minor issue with the calendar, and we probably should vote on this. What happened with the calendar is the December 22nd was posted as, if I'm correct, Mr. Hatch, it was posted as a full day?
November 20, sorry, December 22?
December 22.
December 22nd is posted as a full day. There's two things, actually. That's posted as a full day, and even more importantly, the last day of school, which is June 11th, is misnamed an early closing day. It really should be an early release day. I know it seems like a subtle distinction, but an early close would be like we had for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Everyone goes home.
Everybody goes home, including admin and clerical staff. That really should be, and always has been, an early release day, the last day of school where students leave at the half-day point, but staff stays to the regular hour to close out the year. So as it stands right now, the June 11 should get changed from EC to ER, so from early closing to early release. And that would, that would keep the teachers a full day. And in reality, the 22nd, right before the holiday, should probably be an early close.
So early close is 11:15, early release. What's early close?
No, no, they're both, they're both the same, they're both the same times, and it's depending on which school because they all close a little differently on half-days like they do a little differently on full days. The distinction between early release and early close is, early release is students leave, everybody else stays. Early close, we shut down the buildings and everybody leaves. So like, like we had for the day before Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
That was an early close, so it was a half-day for students, and it was a half-day for staff. Okay? And everybody left at, you know, all the students left at the traditional half-day dismissal, and then the staff left shortly after.
So I think for the vote on this, we'll take it as two separate.
Absolutely.
We'll take the 22nd first as an early close.
Early close.
Early close. We'll take it as an early close, and then we'll take the 11th as an early release. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to modify the 2023, 2024 school calendar to make December 22nd an early close.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have June 11th as an early release.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So next, moving on to public comment.
No, the, Mr. Chair, no, he was, he was here just in case, because actually, Mr. Paul Marini brought it to my attention, so I want to give credit where credit's due. It's not like I found this, so he was here in case anybody had any other further questions with the calendar.
Do I read the calendar every day, just like a...
It was a shock, one of the teachers found a half-day living room.
So seeing no public comment, have a motion? Does anyone have any comment up here?
Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.